Andrew, we're ready to go. All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tulare City Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, October 8th, 2025, the hour being 7:00 PM. We'll go ahead and get started. Item number one is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you all rise and join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two, the roll call. Commissioner Hammer.
Here.
Commissioner Proctor.
Here.
Commissioner Gossett.
Here.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Here.
Commissioner Jensen.
Here.
Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
I'm Commissioner Sloan. Also like to welcome Councilwoman Hanson, Councilwoman Manzio, Mr. Agard, Attorney Johnson down there, Ms. Fairborn in the back, as well as Mr. Hanson. And item number three, public hearing and recommendation on a land use map amendment, a quick request by Tulala 90 LLC to reassign the land use designation for approximately 10 acres located at approximately 900 South Main, south side of SR 36, from medium density residential to high density residential. Mr. Agard.
Thank you, Chairman. Members of the Commission, this is a land use map amendment for property that you're pretty familiar with. You've had numerous applications in the past, which you have made recommendation and approvals for. Previously, it was rezoned to R17 to facilitate a single-family residential subdivision that at the time was going to be rental homes. The applicant was able to get the property rezoned according to what they needed, and then they went through a preliminary subdivision plan, and the planning commission approved the subdivision plan for the single-family detached homes. They did submit a final plat for just eight lots along Settlement Canyon Road, but they have not done anything since. Whether or not the property has the same ownership, I don't know. We do have a different applicant, and they're proposing a different plan for this property. So first of all, we have to consider the land use map before we can consider a zoning change. In this case, the land use map amendment only affects a portion of the property. The total property that's affected by this would be 38 acres. However, the land use map amendment is only for about 10 acres and is the parcel that's highlighted in red on the aerial photograph. That is about as close as I could get without having a survey description superimposed over the aerial photograph. But it's at about 900 South and sits immediately southeast of SR 36. The current zoning of the property is R17, and this is the current land use designation of the property. The current land use designation is medium density residential. Medium density residential usually carries a density of about five units per acre and is exclusive to single-family detached residential homes. The zoning districts that can occur in an MDR area are R17, R18, and R110. So currently, it has the R17 zoning district, which is compliant with the current land use map. The applicant would like to reassign the land use designation from MDR to HDR, and the HDR would only apply to this portion of the property. The HDR is a land use designation that is specific to higher density residential and permits a density between eight units per acre up to 20 units per acre. There are four zoning districts that can occur with an HDR designation. Those are the MR8, MR12, MR16, and the MR20. Before we can consider a rezone to MR8, which is what the applicant is asking for, and that's also the next item on your agenda, is the zoning map amendment, the land use map must first be amended to HDR. So that's what's being requested. What the planning commission and ultimately the city council have to decide is if this property is best suited for high-density residential. Does this serve the interests of the city by having HDR in this location? And what is best for the city for this property? There are some extenuating circumstances related to this property, one of them being water rights. The city does have a well on the property, and previous city council did make an agreement with the property owner that there are a certain number of water rights that must be used on this property. And it's, I'm not sure exactly how many water rights there are. If you have questions about that, Paul Hanson, the city engineer, can address that for you. But that is a circumstance that's related to this property. There are a number of water rights that must be used on this property. This item does require a public hearing. Staff did send out notices to property owners within 200 feet of the subject property. We have received numerous comments. We received comments from Don Dalton, Courtney Smith, Sharon F., Brittany Yates, Steve Toulon, Jennifer Hinton, Glenda Bender, and just before I came into the meeting, I also received comments from Dick Agard and Ralph Pierce. Those comments were forwarded to the planning commission automatically, so you should have received those. The general synopsis of those comments, the individuals expressed opposition to the change, expressing concerns of infrastructure problems, traffic, and so forth. But that's what's being requested. If the planning commission has any questions, they'd be happy to try and answer those for you. The applicant is also here. He would like to do a presentation of his own. I don't know if he wants to do that with the land use map or with the zoning map, which is following this agenda item. But if the planning commission has any questions, they'd be happy to try and answer those for you.
Thank you, Mr. Agard. Any questions from staff? It's more of a staff for staff. Also, it takes some discussion on whether you want to hear that presentation for, prior to this item, or during this item, or during the subsequent one.
I think during this item would be best. More information, we have better.
Traditionally, we've done that after the public hearing. I can't help but wonder if some of the questions from the public won't be answered during the presentation, if we want to invert that. Andrew, let's go ahead and, with everybody's consent, let's go ahead and have the applicant come forward. And I know that's a little bit out of how we normally do things, but in the interest of the folks that have expressed interest, let's hear what the applicant has to say, and then maybe that'll answer some of the questions that folks have.
My name's Jason Bowle. I do appreciate your time, and I appreciate the interest in the application before you this evening, yes, the two applications before you this evening. I'm here representing Tulala 90. I'm an urban planner. Have worked as a planner for cities and counties in Utah and Idaho for the last 20 years. And I was excited to be a part of this project. I'm fairly new to the project, and I'm excited to be here this evening and hear your ideas, your thoughts, and to hear the comments and interest in the application. So as staff mentioned, you may be familiar with this project if you've been on the planning commission for some time, as this project did previously go through a rezone and the subdivision process. Additionally, this year, we've had the opportunity to sit down with staff and outline and talk about some of the options with the property. I think what you're seeing tonight is in iteration, it's been an iterative process as we've received comments, I think from where we started earlier in the year. The idea, the impetus for the application is to provide additional housing options, additional units, and I think it's slightly to add a different housing type to the market, mainly these cottage homes. I think when we had started the process, the idea was looking at mainly townhomes and recognizing the desire and the demand to have a single-family home that's smaller, on a smaller lot. We're seeing a lot of interest across the state. We're seeing a lot of interest in this area of the state for this type of, this type of product, because it does provide a more affordable option of owning a home and getting into a home than what a larger lot on a larger piece of property would. So this map, and I apologize if you can't see real well, there's a red line that goes around the boundaries of the property, the overall property, which is approximately 178 acres. We are here this evening, and I do appreciate the opportunity to present, I think, before the other application as well, because I agree, the more information upfront, I think, is helpful. You know, we're not asking for a land use plan, a land use map amendment, without showing our cards, in essence, and letting you know, this is what our plans are, this is what we intend to do. And so I agree, and I appreciate the opportunity to share this information at the beginning. So overall, the, as was mentioned, the property is currently zoned R17. We are seeking to rezone 10 acres, approximately 10 acres, to the MR8, which would require the land use map amendment for the higher density. I think what should be noted, and as staff mentioned in the staff report, the overall density of the project is really only one and a half units per acre. When you look at the property and you look at what our plans are, where we're planning and developing, and the possibility of a conservation easement on, you know, on the remainder of the property, a portion of the remainder of the property, if the city is interested. It's an idea that we've talked with staff, you know, and generally, we don't, I mean, we don't know if the city has an interest in it and what that would look like, but we wanted to present that option as a way of providing that public benefit in exchange for the PUD rezones. Let's skip past that one. I think staff went over this, that it is currently medium density residential, which permits four to six units per acre. We're requesting on this brown portion here in the middle, approximately 10 acres, for that to be high density with a desire to utilize townhomes in that area. And again, the overall density for the project is one and a half units per acre. We do feel that we meet the criteria for the land use map amendment in providing housing choice and affordability, balanced land use pattern with where the development is happening. As was mentioned before, the, it has been, a subdivision was approved previously, utilities have been heavily studied, the traffic has been heavily studied, and it was approved previously. We have gone back and looked, and included in our application was an updated traffic study to see what the impacts may be with the additional units. And it was the same conclusion, that it's an appropriate location for this type of development and for this, for this number of units. Again, we are offering with the conservation easement, you know, the opportunity for that resource conservation and maintaining that community identity and preserving that area and preserving the open space through the conservation easement. So, and this is kind of getting into the next, the next application, but again, for the sake of transparency and understanding what our plans are, the desire is to seek the PUD, an R17 PUD, over what would be the northern and southern portion of the property, and then an MR8 PUD in that green area in the middle. So on the criteria for the PUD, we also feel that we meet that criteria with the, there's adequate public services and facilities. We feel that the land is suitable with the adjoining properties, or adjacent properties across the street being high-density and commercially zoned, and the efficiency of city-provided services, and the provision of additional amenities compared to a conventional development, with the proposal of public trails, the open space in the park, and the conservation easement, the preservation of the hillside behind, behind the development. We understand that the, you know, the PUD process, it is a bit of a negotiation, and that's why we're here, is to understand if there's different amenities or what it is you would like to see, so that we can work through that process as we go through, as we go to city council to, with your recommendation and how it is we can improve this project. Again, the impact on adjoining neighboring properties, understanding that it's been approved for a subdivision, the zoning has been analyzed and approved for development in that area, understanding that the density, we are asking for the density to increase, but again, we're looking to offset that request with the conservation easement, as well as the, I think, the unit types in, in providing the cottage homes, the smaller single-family homes on the majority of the property. So with the PUD, we, there is the ability to ask for certain modifications to the dimensional standards in the code. We are seeking some of those in order to facilitate and accommodate the cottage homes as well as the townhomes on, on the property. And that was included in our application materials. Let me grab my notes real quick, I can see it easier. So we are requesting that the minimum lot width for the cottage lots be reduced to 40 feet. The setbacks along Highway 36, we had included and intended to have a 25-foot setback to pull it off the roadway. We would, we are open and would like the possibility of just having that be the standard R17 of the 20-foot. That does allow us to move the project further away from, from the hillside in order to preserve more of that area. It is only five feet, but it does make a difference in moving it away from the hillside in the area where the trail is, and between the trail and the hillside. We're also seeking to reduce the side setbacks to five feet and the lot coverage at 31% and the minimum dwelling size being 1,000 square feet. And then on the townhomes, the 20-foot minimum lot width on the townhome lots, and then the interior setbacks being 12 and a half feet, I'm sorry, rear yard setbacks at 12 and a half feet, so a total of 25 feet between the townhomes and a side yard setback of five feet, and then the lot coverage of the 62%, because these are going to be individually subdivided townhomes, individual lots, as opposed to a single lot with multiple units So to provide some examples of what we're seeing constructed in, in other areas by builders throughout the state, it is, it is interesting. I was at a housing summit last month with five of the top 10 builders, home builders in the state of Utah, and they were asked, what kind of product do you like to build? And they all said, well, four of the five, I guess, said cottage homes, these smaller homes, because there's a demand for them, and there's the ability to make them a unique product that, because of the scale, that you don't always see with the larger homes. And so, again, this is something that there's a lot of demand for based on the affordability, based on, and I can attest, the lack of desire to landscape and to mow the lawn, having a smaller lot is appreciated. I actually, I live in a rear-loaded home on a small lot like this, and it's great. I get to know my neighbors, we're close. It really builds that sense of community by being able to have these homes and families in these homes close together. We are asking for the term masonry material to include stucco brick and stone masonry and fiberboard cement. In the code, it seems that the masonry material, at some points, it includes the fiberboard and cement board, in other places, it doesn't. We just wanted to make it clear that the fiber cement board would be permitted, and that the cottage home be reduced to 1,000 square feet of habitable space from the 1,100. We've gone through the design criteria. We don't necessarily have issues or concerns. We're not seeking exceptions from that. The intent is to be able to build a well-designed product that fits your design criteria, that is a great project for the city to be proud of and for the residents to be proud of. Here's some examples of some of the townhome units. Here we are requesting the exterior material be permitted to permit the stucco and fiber cement siding and wood, in addition to cultured brick and stone over at least 40% of the unit, of the front facade. So to give you an idea of what the site plan looks like, that red line is the 10-foot trail with the green areas being open space, and then that area behind the trail is where we would look to, to dedicate the conservation easement, and whether or not there was, was natural park space in some of that area, you know, open to that possibility as well, depending on what the city would like and if the city is interested in that conservation So as I mentioned before, in understanding traffic is a concern, we did have our traffic engineer take a look at the, the traffic impacts and redid a, redid a study based on the revised layout, and they did not identify any concerns with, with what is proposed as far as the traffic impact. So we have been working with Rocky Mountain Power and understanding that the easements need, those lines need to be addressed, and it's been a work in progress. I think we're close to having, having finalized, this is the, the last iteration of what they've provided us as far as those, those easements and the easement location. So we did also, as part of the previous subdivision, a rockfall study, geotechnical, was done. We asked for an update to understand if this new proposal created any additional concerns, and he did not identify any, any additional concerns with, with the new layout. So that is my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions now. I'm happy to let the public share their thoughts and their comments and come back and answer questions.
While I've got you here, let's go ahead and come to the, to the commission and see if there are any, any questions that we have specifically for you while we've got you. We may well call you back after the public hearing portion. Kelly?
So I heard a minimum cottage home size of 1,000 square feet. What is the maximum size of that cottage home?
So because of the reduced lots, I mean, that's really kind of the, the footprint we're looking at is 1,000 to 1,200-type footprint, because that home, in meeting the setbacks, it's not going to be possible to build monster, large homes on that site, on those sites, those lots.
Questions?
I'm curious about the bedroom. So is that a two-bedroom, three-bedroom?
So there's actually multiple different models and versions of three-bedroom and four-bedroom, and it can be reduced. four-bedroom, and it can be reduced to the two-bedroom. There's, again, because of, there's just, there's a lot of flexibility that we've seen in the floor plans and in the possibility of homes that can be built on there, just because there's so much interest, so much desire out there, that there's a lot of creativity in how those are being laid out.
I've got a couple that maybe you can, maybe you can't, my recollection on, you mentioned the working with Rocky Mountain Power on the easement. Correct me if I'm wrong, and maybe you don't know this, maybe I have to go to Andrew, the previous applicant was going to bury those lines, is that not, am I remembering that correctly?
My recollection with the previous application was they were not going to bury the lines, they were going to try and co-locate the central line
That's what it was.
To the lines that are closer to SR-36 and closer to the mountain.
I knew there was some of them funky with those, but thank you. Secondly, are these going to be individual owners, or are these going to be also rental properties like the original application?
I don't know if that's been identified, I think what's been discussed is that it's providing an ownership option, so, I mean, they will be subdivided and for sale.
Do you foresee any extra parking being included beyond what we're seeing on the concept drawing?
We've gone through and addressed the parking requirements for the townhomes, I guess that's, with them having two-car garages and the two spots in the driveway, you know, it's anticipated that four, you know, four parking spots per townhome. So, and it's kind of the balance of the green space versus parking space.
Any other questions for Mr. Ball? Okay, thanks very much for your presentation.
Yep, thank you.
Andrew's leaping to his foot.
Just grabbing the iPad.
Andrew, while I've got you there, I've got a couple of questions that you might answer too. You mentioned, we had some, I'm not going to say transfer, for lack of a better term, but with the previous applicant, we're going to do some things with the water, which you mentioned. Do we have any idea, maybe this is for Mr. Hanson, do we have any idea how much that water is? Specifically, if there was enough water to handle the previous subdivision, is that going to be adequate to do what they're anticipating here?
So it's my understanding they have sufficient water for the previous development, and Paul can correct me if I'm wrong, the, one of the reasons for the additional density is to utilize all of the water that is available.
We've not done an analysis on the final layout, because we're not considering a final layout at this point, but they have approximately two-hundred acre feet that's available for them.
That's actually all my goofy questions for the moment, I'm sure I'll have more. Okay, this does call for a public hearing. Just to make me feel better, how many of you are planning on getting up and speaking on this issue tonight? Excellent, okay, if I hold you to three minutes east, will that each, will that be sufficient? Okay, I'll ask you to go ahead and come forth, come forward, is our handy-dandy clipboard up there?
It's here.
If I get you to state your name.
Wade Hensy.
Okay, when you're done, step over here and fill out your name for us, please.
I'm opposed to the whole thing, I mean, they say they got a conservation easement, what about all the wildlife that wintered there? It's the first one. Then they say they have water, but they keep saying there's water shortages in the city, I mean, or do we have it, or do we not? And then they say the traffic study's been done, I don't know who here has not drove down Main Street and seen what it looks like. You had a bunch of high-density homes and homes that are that close, it is certainly going to affect it. And I just don't think that's something we need, another high-density homes in our city, especially in that location.
Thanks very much, Mr. Hensy. Let me pull up the timer, I might find my mother. Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, I think, I'm having trouble hearing, so I think everything was talked about, but I am concerned about the water, living right there in the blue house on the corner. I'm, my front yard, we have totally removed the grass, there's no grass, it's just morning glory and goat heads. We're trying to put in a garden, trying to keep things alive with the restrictions, with the drought and everything. The poplars are dying, you can see that they are dying. I know that this water, where I give the, this, the water can only be used in this area, I understand, it cannot be used anyplace else, but we're short of water. Drought conditions, I know he said that they felt like there's no trouble with the speed limit, but fifty miles an hour, when the property owners on the other side of the street, down by us, 1220 South, down by us, those two lots there, they were, it was approved if UDOT would lower the speed. The speed is still fifty-five miles an hour. Coming up out of Twilla, this main part of Twilla, you get that dip, and it changes from thirty-five to forty-five, and then when you pass the next street on the, I have trouble knowing whether it's north or south here, on the right hand of the street, the sign for fifty-five miles an hour is just beyond that street, and people are starting to go fifty-five miles an hour when it should be forty-five, not fifty-five. Accidents have been at that street, on our street, 1220. I don't know how many accidents have been there, but there's a big rock there, because someone came into the yard before we ever moved there. But since we've moved there, someone died at that corner, maybe more than one. We were never told if the other two had died, but at least one died at that corner, fifty-five miles an hour. The water, the speed, the rocks coming down, you can see that the water is coming off the mountain, down at the base. If we have an earthquake, all the, my yard is full of rocks, small rocks, not big rocks, small rocks. What is going to keep that, I know they did a rock study, but what's going to keep that up there? The animals, they come into our yard all the time, the deer. These, I know they say they've answered all of this, but it is still a question, and I don't feel like it is, I don't feel like that there is room there for everything for Thank you for your time.
What was your name, ma'am?
Rebecca Smith, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, thanks, Ms. Smith, we appreciate you.
My name's Jennifer Hinton, and I did send an email earlier, hopefully you all got, I don't know if you, if the presenter of the project had a chance to read that, I would appreciate it if he did. I'd like to preface this with a couple of things. I live right off of Settlement Canyon Road on Heritage Hill Drive, I'm three houses off of Settlement Canyon Road, I've been there for sixteen years, I'm fifty-one, I'm not ashamed to save that, but thirty-six of my years I have lived within point two miles of this property, because I grew up just off of Coleman, by the bus garage. So the majority of my life has been spent right here, I am a proud Twilla City citizen, and I really am challenging that this is good for our community. I do not feel real estate companies are invested in Twilla City, I am hoping that you, as a planning commission, are invested in Twilla City, this is a great place, it's why I'm here and I'll continue to stay. I will address mule deer population. I have a degree in conservation biology, I don't work in that, my daughter is a big game wildlife biologist for the state of Utah, she's one of the mule deer expert in the state, prime mule deer habitat there. We've seen a massive decrease in the mule deer in our subdivision, I did not build my home there, Mr. Sloan actually helped me get my home there, in the dam subdivision, as we call it. I bought a home that had previously been built there, since the homes went up on Settlement Canyon Road, drastic, drastic decrease. You think predation is the top threat to mule deer? No, it's habitat loss and it's mainly winter. You drive that road, hundreds of mule deer during the winter, big difference. I also track, I had included one of my statistics, I track the deer killed every year on that road. I worked in auto insurance for several years, big impact on people financially and vehicle collisions with deer there. And whether you care about the deer or not, I hope you care about the financial well-being and safety of people. I am grateful to hear that a traffic study was done, I'd love to know how much time they spent doing that, I invited each of you, I'd invite you, Mr. Hanson, to spend an afternoon in my backyard. I just had my husband measure, I sit a hundred-and-twenty-nine feet off of SR-36, I have the buffer of the Pioneer Cemetery. You cannot carry a conversation on, in our backyard, because of the semi-trailers that now come through there. Twenty feet, are those residents going to be warned what that sounds like? I'd invite you to sit there and count the number of those semi-trucks that come by, all day. It is not safe, and if a traffic study was done, I have no idea what they were looking at on the increase. Where are those roads, I'd like to see a better picture, are those exiting directly onto 36, are they coming off on Settlement Canyon Road? We will need a light at Settlement Canyon Road to make a left-hand turn onto 36, okay? Again, I live this every day of my life, I love where I live, I want, I know that development happens, I'm not ignorant of that, but I think this is unwise, even with a conservation easement, this is unwise. UDOT, you're creating a bottleneck there, and does UDOT know anything? And as far as division of wildlife and stuff, have they been consulting, and even then, I don't know if they'd speak up, their jobs are always on the line for threatening real estate development. So, just would like you to consider that, let's preserve our community, growth is going to happen, I know that, it's a horrible place, with SR-36 right there and the traffic that comes through, and will continue to grow with Stockton and areas growing out there. So, appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Hello, everybody, my name's Corey Sagendorf, you may have heard of me, you may have not. With that being said, I had one thing I just wanted to add, because I wasn't actually planning on coming up here. I lived just off of Coleman for about ten years myself, and the mule deer population that she was talking about, you know, we see a huge increase, especially over the wintering of those mule deer getting hit and killed. What do you guys think is going to replace that when we are seeing those houses being built? In my eyes, I would say probably kids. Kids are going to be the ones that are going to be playing out there, and twenty feet away from a main highway, you're going to start seeing children get hit, I would expect. So the only thing I would want to recommend to you guys is to think about that, because there's going to be a replacement of something out there that isn't going to be paying attention to that traffic. Right now it's deer, what's next? And our kids are our future, thank you.
Thank you. Can I get you to step up here and leave your name and contact information, please? Thank you.
My name is Larry Seals, I've lived in Twilla for most of my life, I live about off of 480 South, and I don't think it's a great idea to have high-density home zoning put there. I personally think that before any more high-density homes are put into Twilla, you ought to really wait till the Mid Valley Highway comes in, and then start doing studies after that to see if, you know, how things shake out with that, because I think there's a lot of congestion, especially as you go downtown. I think by adding high-density homes on the south end of town, you're now going to bring that congestion all the way through town, and all the way to the south corridor. And I think what was mentioned earlier, you're more than likely going to need to have a traffic light put in there, which is just going to add to it, you're going to have backed-up traffic all along Main Street. I think that, you know, the zoning that's there already is adequate, I think it would make for a nicer neighborhood if you had single-family homes on a quarter acre or fifth of an acre than putting a bunch of high-density homes there. I personally think that safety will become a big issue, I think the noise is going to be a big issue. I think that you're putting these off of a two-lane highway that's already congested with some heavy traffic, and I think that it's just going to make it a mess, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Seals. Anyone else like to come and speak on this issue? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. I'm sorry, I will reopen the public hearing.
My name is Ruth Brown, and I'm a new transplant, I guess, I've been in Twilla for five years, I enjoy the community, I'm grateful we live here. We came from Hawaii, we lived in a part of Hawaii where there was one road in, one road out, and I see that mirrored into Twilla, and that becomes a major problem. I understand they did surveys, and I also understand that they're paid to paint a rosy picture, and I think the people who have spoken have given the other side of the picture very well. We have water concerns, we have traffic concerns, we have safety concerns, we have conservation concerns, and for that reason, I oppose it as well, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Okay, I'm serious this time, last call. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back. Commission, we also, we're kind of thinking maybe some of those questions could be dealt with, if you wish to speak to the presenter again, if there's anything you have questions for him about, it would be appropriate. If not, we can have some more discussion, or whatever you wish to do at this point.
Let's go ahead with questions.
So how many exits are you planning on? Is this going to exit to Settlement Canyon Road, or are you going to have an exit out for the high-density and then?
So, another exit for the cottage homes.
Yeah, as we've worked with UDOT, there are, there's an exit on the southern portion of the project, I think Andrew's pulling it up for us, and then there's two additional exits out to the highway, and then one on Settlement Canyon Road as well. So, and those, those are the entrances that were previously reviewed and approved by UDOT for the previous subdivision, those are in the same location. Additionally, of note, we are proposing on the very south end, the ability in access easement, when and if a road, if the parcel to the south is ever annexed and developed, an access easement there, for the sake of connectivity in road layout, that the ability to connect in there as well.
Further questions for the developer? Or, I'm sorry, for the applicant? Thanks, Mr. Ball. Okay, I'll bring you back to the commission for further questions or further action. I, since you guys all be checking, I'll start. Having been here when we approved this before, and I voted in favor of it, and going back in time, I would vote in favor of it again, if everything was the same as it was at that Mr. Seals, your point is well-taken regarding traffic. We were not seeing the traffic, certainly truck traffic, in this part of town. We were not seeing the track, traffic, certainly truck traffic in this part of town at the time we previously approved this. Having said that, if we're going to wait for Mid Valley Highway before we do anything with that piece of property, I won't be around to see it. You won't be around to see it. The reality is, as much as we would love to have Mid Valley Highway somewhere between 2036 and 2050, we might get on the list. So, I'm not, I certainly don't discount what you say. I agree 100%. It would be nice if we had that there tomorrow. I know that Tuilla City has done a lot of work and a lot of work with the Army to create that corridor so that that part of it can be, can be done sooner. But again, it's millions of dollars. And we certainly don't have it today. As an aside to Ms. Hinton, I do recall very well putting her in that damn subdivision. And she is right. The noise is different than it was 16 years ago. And as a real estate company that does in fact have an investment in this community, I'm not unaware of what you're talking about. I, I'm on that road every day as you are. So, I'm, I'm going to wait for a motion from my compatriots most likely, but I'm not necessarily as inclined to support this development as much as I am the one beating the property rights issue to death up here. I still live here and work here and have those kids down on that street. So, I've got some concerns with it that aren't necessarily made to feel better with a 20-foot setback off of a road that's already scary to begin with. But that's my comment for right now. Further comments?
Chairman, if I could remind the planning commission that this item is for that land-use map amendment for the 10 acres. It is not for the zoning of the properties. Just be aware of that when you do your, when you do your motion.
They're all very quiet up here.
I guess I'll be the brave one. I'll make a motion, Chairman.
Commissioner Proctor.
I move forward a positive recommendation to the city council for the 1 o'clock subdivision land use map amendment request by Jason Bowle representing Tuilla 90 LLC to resign the land use designation for approximately 10 acres from median density to high-density residential. Application number 2025084.
We have a motion from Commissioner Proctor. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Commissioner Jensen. Commissioner Hammer, how do you vote?
Nay.
Commissioner Proctor?
Aye.
Commissioner Gossett?
Nay.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Nay.
Commissioner Jensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson?
Nay.
Commissioner Sloan also votes nay. Rule that is defeated by a four to, I'm sorry, five to two. I'll look for a second motion.
I second. Or no, so, no, sorry.
My motion would be a move that we forward a negative recommendation to the city council for the 1 o'clock subdivision land use map amendment request by Jason Bowle representing Tuilla 90 LLC to reassign the land use designation for approximately 10 acres from medium-density residential to high-density residential. Application number 2025084.
I'll second.
We have a motion. We have a second roll call vote. Commissioner Hammer?
Aye.
Commissioner Proctor?
Aye.
Commissioner Gossett?
Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Aye.
Commissioner Jensen?
Nay.
Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Sloan also votes aye. Rule that passes six to one. We'll be sending a negative recommendation to the city council and that's who will get the chance to take a look at this next, so.
If I could just say one thing about the city council meeting? That is a public hearing, but we do not send out notices for that meeting. So, I advise the public, if they're interested in attending that meeting, to please be aware of the agenda. As I anticipate, that'll be on the November 5th meeting. However, it depends on what planning commission does with the next item, so.
Okay, so those of you in the audience that have taken an active role today or have an interest in doing so, please take Mr. Agard's words to heart and pay attention to the agendas. Best place to find him is on the website. Item number four, public recommendation, public hearing recommendation on a zoning map amendment request by Tuilla 90 LLC to reassign the zoning for approximately 38 acres located at approximately 900 South Main Street, south side of SR 36, from R17 residential to MR8 PUD multifamily residential and R17 PUD residential zoning districts and to establish conditions of the 1 o'clock PUD. Mr. Agard.
So, my presentation really doesn't differ much from what the applicant just presented, so I'll be very brief. I think the applicant did a far better job than I did considering the parameters of the, of the application. This is a zoning map amendment application that follows up the land use map. And even though the planning commission did recommend unfavorably about the land use map, we still need to make a recommendation on the zoning map as is proposed. Then the city council ultimately will make that final decision at their, at their public meeting. As the applicant showed, this is the subject property. They are requesting the zoning be changed to R17 PUD and the MR8 PUD. I just want to touch on what the PUD is. The PUD is what we call Planned Unit Development, and it is an overlay to the existing zoning district. What a PUD does not do is it does not create new uses for a property and it does not create additional densities for a property. A PUD is a tool that the city has in its toolbox whereby we can change and reduce design standards such as setbacks, lot sizes, architectural standards and so forth to incentivize clustering or maybe some reduced compact, more compacted development in exchange for open space and so forth elsewhere on the site. One of the recent PUDs that the planning commission and the city council approved was for D.R. Horton, their Western Acres. In order to approve a PUD, there must be a tangible public interest, a tangible benefit to the city in exchange for a reduction in those standards. When D.R. Horton did their project, they realigned Middle Canyon Drainage and they put a large trail extending the length of that drainage, which is available for public use. And the city council and the planning commission at the time were in favor of that and gave them the PUD qualifications. In regards to this project, the applicant has already stated that it is a large property, 178 acres. And ultimately, the density is about 1.5 units per acre. The question is, is placing a conservation easement over the remainder of that property sufficient to qualify for PUD regulations? They're also proposing a trail along the southern side of that property that would be available for public use and so forth. Is that sufficient? That's up to the planning commission and city council to decide. But those are two options there that you can consider in regards to this PUD request. Now, the applicant did touch on the PUD standards. Like I said before, the PUD does not change the density and it does not change the uses. The underlying zoning governs the densities and the uses. So, in the R17 PUD, it's all single-family detached. In the MR8 PUD, it would all be multifamily residential. The PUD does not alter that. So, like I said, I want to get into the whole presentation. The applicant did a good job with that. I do want to state that one of the differences between this proposal and the previous, this one has approximately 60 more units than what you would see with just an R17. So, there is a, an increase in the unit count. But as mentioned, the accesses are all the same. The studies that have been provided have been updated accordingly. And it's up to you guys to decide whether or not you want to go with the PUD. So, if you have any questions for me?
Any questions for staff?
This is probably for the applicant, but what's the conservation easement? What does that entail?
It's, it's just a protective easement over the property that prohibits any kind of development that occur there. So, it would remain perpetual open space.
Okay, but not necessarily public access or anything like that?
Good question. That's more of a legal question that I'm not able to answer. There have been development potentials, development projects proposed for this property. Paul and I can recall a time when somebody wanted to put a restaurant on top of 1 o'clock hill. So, things do happen and a conservation easement would maintain and keep that as open space in the future. Whether it's public access or not, I don't know because it's still private property.
Okay.
Excellent question.
So, if we start the rumor that that's where the Olive Garden is going, we'll be okay? Don't do that now?
That'd be a tough development, but there were proposals to put a restaurant up there.
I believe it.
Texas Roadhouse.
Any further questions for staff? Seeing, thanks, Andrew.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Seeing none, this is again open for a public hearing. Rules will be the same. If you do have something that you would like to see, please feel free to come forward. Keep your comments to the same three minutes. And again, you know the drill about leaving your contact information.
Better give her a minute and a half, that's it.
It's not like we don't know what she's going to say. Welcome, Ms. Mascherino.
Hello. I'm Kalani Mascherino. I live on 2 o'clock Drive and I love my neighborhood. And I love the south side of Tuilla. But in speaking about the trail, where are the people using the trail? If it's up, open to public, do those people park on SR 36 to use the trail? Like where there's, he indicated that the parking is, you get your two spots in front of your house and your two-car garage, which you use as a storage unit. So, where are all the extra cars going to go for people that want to access that? Are they going to try to park up Settlement Canyon Road? Or I'm not sure. But we also know, and what's not showing on this map, is that 326 acres are going in west of 1050. So, is that also being considered as part of the traffic study? The amount of, I know we're going to take the trucks off of Main Street, but that doesn't include the box trucks, the cargo trucks, the employees, the everybody else. Once Timpee and 1220 connect to 320, to the, there's a name for that industrial park? Anyone? Tuilla Business Extravaganza? Where? Like, you already know? I can show you the scar. I had to have neck surgery from the accident I got on SR 36 and 900 South because a truck pulled out, a car pulled out in front of me when I was traveling south. So, I'm still recovering from that. And my husband was also on an, in an accident on SR 36 when we're just trying to get home. So, I just, we, yeah. It's the traffic. There, we've got to do something. It's already, I already admitted that I have to, you have to slam down to 55 to get over, to get off of 36. And then when I pull up 3 o'clock, I just look both ways and go for it. You just have to take the gap because, and so when the holiday gets there, let's not forget the holiday and the 26 apartments that were approved last week that go on the south side of 3 o'clock drive. So, it's a giant cluster and I just don't know how we're going to do it unless we start like Jetsons. So, that's all I got.
Thank you, Ms. Mascherino.
Till next time.
Thank you. Any further comment from the public? Please. Give us your name and that's probably enough for now.
Yes, my name is Courtney Smith. I sent in an email as well, but I didn't hear it read publicly, so I just want to make sure that it was said. I'm a Realtor here in Tuilla. This decision is going to shape the future, not just for us, but for generations to come. Sorry, I'm going to read this because I'll just ramble for the rest of the time. It's, it's about protecting our infrastructure, our environment, our balance of growth that keeps our community strong. First, Tuilla and Tuilla's infrastructure simply isn't built for this kind of density. Our city is already expanding rapidly and one of our greatest challenges is water. High-density housing means hundreds of new residents drawing from the same limited supply. Wells in the area could drop and we could risk stretching our system thin at the time when conservation should be top priority. Traffic is one major concern. The base of 1 o'clock connects directly to the roads that already experience heavy use. Adding dense houses will increase congestion, slow emergency response times and require costly road expansions. Schools, emergency services and utilities are already at or near capacity and more people means more strain on every part of the system. Second, we have considered the, we have to consider the environmental or geolog, gee, gosh, geographical impact. Even though the project sits at the base, the hill itself is a sensitive natural feature. Development there will change drainage patterns, increase runoff and could cause, cause erosion or flooding issues downhill. Construction will require significant grading, removing natural vegetation that currently helps stabilize the slope and control water flow. And we cannot overlook what this area represents. 1 o'clock hill is a defining landmark for Tuilla, part of what gives our community its identity. Once the base is filled with dense housing, we lose that open space, that view, that sense of separation between town and natural landscape. Those qualities are exactly what makes Tuilla especially, special. Finally, we have to get our priorities straight when we keep approving more high-density housing. Tuilla's infrastructure, our roads, our water systems, our schools, our emergency services, again, is already under tremendous pressure. Before we add thousands of more residents, we need to focus on strengthening what we already have. That means improving our water capacity, updating outdated systems, ensuring our roads can handle current traffic and making sure essential services are staffed and supported. We will continue, if we continue approving high-density projects without first investing in our foundation, we are setting ourselves up for serious long-term problems. Growth can be a good thing, but only when it's responsible and supported by infrastructure to sustain it. In closing?
Nail it.
Okay, I'm asking the council to protect the base of 1 o'clock hill from high-density development and to put Tuilla's infrastructure first. Let's make sure our city is ready before we keep adding more so that growth benefits everyone, not just in short term, but for the generations who will call Tuilla home. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Any further comment? Okay, we'll rule, actually, Mr. Bowles, would you like to go ahead and speak again? I can close the public hearing first and then I'll ask you to come back up. Go ahead and come on up. We'll close this public hearing and ask, present the applicant to address us again.
Excellent. I appreciate the comments that have been shared and the conversation that's, that's happened. I think, I mean, what I heard is, I think quite honestly are aligned with our goals as well. The conservation easement is intended to preserve 1 o'clock hill. What that looks like, whether or not public access that is permitted, that's to be negotiated. But the idea and the concept of putting a conservation easement is it does preserve and prevent development from happening on that property. The city, we anticipate, would hold the easement and they would be, they would determine what can happen there. In essence, what can't happen there through that, through that agreement. Our desire is to conserve what was, what is a defining landmark in Tuilla. The wildlife habitat, again, the conservation easement, we can look at the areas that are most impacted by wildlife, most used by wildlife and, and focus on that. We're happy to bring that information to city council to do, to gain a better understanding of what areas we really need to be focusing on with that, that conservation easement. We're talking about, there's 143 acres left. High-density has been used, that term has been used. And yes, we were seeking the high-density land use map designation because that's the only designation that would allow townhomes. The density of this project is one and a half units per acre. This is not a high-density project. And what we are offering in return aligns exactly with the comments that have been provided as far as, as what's important. If there's concerns about the noise, then let's talk about mitigation factors. You know, we, we've been planning on the 25 feet instead of reducing it to 5 Instead of reducing it to 5 feet, there's landscaping, there's a sound wall, there's options to mitigate, mitigate those issues. And if those are your concerns, help us understand so that we can make the plan better. Water was expressed as a concern. This property, and quite honestly, this layout is not, and we've included the water requirement table. We have adequate water rights. We are not gonna use all the water with this development. So we have the adequate water rights. If landscaping and utilizing outdoor water is an issue, we can talk about zero-scaping, if that's something that, if that's what the city desires. There is a benefit to outdoor landscaping and recharging and putting that water back into the ground. But we're happy to have those, those discussions and understanding what would make this project, what would make this project better. Safety, again, we anticipate the, the project being fenced, and there being a fence along between the highway. It's gonna be a safer situation. And kids are important. Kids are our future, and kids need a place to live. Families, young families, need a place to live. Governor Cox wants, was it 35,000 new homes, starter homes, in the state in the next couple of years? This is just a drop in the bucket. But it provides Tooele with a community, with a neighborhood, that's well-designed, that is held to a higher standard because of the PUD and the design standards that are required in the PUD. It also provides the city to gain something that they don't have with the conservation easement. And so that's really our proposal, is that there's a subdivision approved there. Development is gonna happen there. Let's find a way to make it better. Let's find a way to make it benefit the community. And that's what we feel we're offering, is that opportunity to create a better-designed subdivision that has a direct public benefit, a tangible public benefit, for future generations. So I'm happy to answer any, any other questions you, you may have.
So it, I can't remember who brought it up. Where is the parking for the trail system?
So the trail, as in the previous subdivision, there wasn't public parking necessarily provided. The idea is that the trail, and this doesn't do a very good job of showing it, but the trail ties into the sidewalk systems, and so the, you wouldn't necessarily park in the subdivision to access it, but you could utilize it to go through the subdivision and utilize, and get next to the hill and utilize that area along the hill.
Further questions for the applicant?
But it, I mean, but if a parking area, if that's, it's helpful for us, as you make a recommendation, whether it's positive or whether it's negative, to understand where the concerns lie, so that we can make those adjustments, so that we can address the issues and concerns. And so that's, I mean, that's ultimately what, I mean, Planning Commission's recommendation is for, is to help us vet the concept, to help us improve the concept as we take that to City Council.
So another question, just 'cause it's hard to see on the map. Is there playground area that I'm missing for kids? 'Cause they obviously don't have much of a yard, right?
Yeah, so down on the southern end, there's the playground area, and then there's a spot kind of in the middle portion in the R8, and then up towards the, where, before it makes the bend, the curve. Those are our park areas, open space areas, where playground equipment, exercise equipment, other amenities are intended to go. So, I mean, they're identified as, I recognize it's kinda hard to see, but identified as amenity areas.
Further questions? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Balls.
Yep.
Did we close the public hearing?
Yes, it did.
Okay, bring it back to the commission for further comments, further questions, and further action.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. So, I mean, can we forward a positive recommendation for MRA, PUD, when we didn't forward a positive recommendation for the MRA?
We can forward anything we want. It's a recommendation, it's not a recommendation. It's not, it's like... City Council owns it, and quite honestly, if that's the inclination of the commission, you've got two council members here that'll be dealing with it next week or whenever, that would need to hear, that's what they're looking for, is a recommendation.
Basically, is what we're just, right now deciding if the PUD is a good idea.
Correct.
That's all it is. Okay.
Andrew, would you characterize that as accurate?
Could you say that again, Commissioner Jensen?
The, right now, the, our, our recommendation is just on the PUD portion of it, is if it should be a PUD.
I think you can make a recommendation on the MRA and the PUD portions of this zoning. Even though you did recommend, contrary to the land-use map, it's a recommendation, as Commissioner Sloan stated. If the, if the commission's not in favor of the RMA, the MRA, then you definitely wanna recommend on the PUD, because those, that affects the entire property, including the R17 portions.
So it would be on the R17 PUD for on the R17?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Did that answer your question?
It does.
Yeah.
Then I also wonder just a little bit about the water rights, 'cause it seems like they have a vested interest. I don't, I think maybe a legal question, but, I mean, if they have the rights and they can't transfer them, transfer them to anywhere else, that just seems kinda, a little bit sticky to me. Because they made a deal years ago. I mean, I remember.
The water right credits were purchased by the prior property owner back when the city acquired the property for the, what we call the Anderson Well. At that time, they had no development plans, and the City Council merely gave the property owner an option to buy water right credits by paying the fee at the time. Because there was no plan that was being approved or presented, the contract condition also says that if they can't use them all on the property, the city would buy them back. So they would not be left holding credits...
That makes me feel better, yeah.
That they would totally lose everything. There might be a difference in value, but, but the water right credits were anticipated to be purchased back if they could not fully utilize them.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Do I have a motion?
Chair? I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Anderson.
I move that we forward a positive recommendation to City Council for 1:00 Hill subdivision map amendment, zoning map amendment, request by Jason Bull, representing Tooele &amp; 90 LLC, to reassign the zoning of the subject property to R17 residential and to adopt, actually, I think it is already there. And to adopt the 1:00 Hill PUD standards proposed in the report. Application number 2025085.
Mr. Arburn, was that clear enough for you to get? Okay, thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second?
We have a second, Commissioner Hammer. Commissioner Hammer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Proctor?
Aye.
Commissioner Gossett?
Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Aye.
Commissioner Jensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Sloan also votes aye. Rule that passes 7-0. I'm guessing that the council understands our recommendations.
I prefer the R17 PUD rather than the...
It's just the R17 PUD.
Thank you.
Item number five, public hearing decision on a conditional use permit request by Guaranteed Auto and Sales LLC to authorize the use of automobile sales and rental to occur on .16 acres located at approximately 375 North Main Street in the G.C. General Commercial Zoning District. Mr. Agard.
Thank you, Commissioners. This application applies to the parcel that is highlighted in red on the aerial photograph. It is a parcel that has double frontage, has frontage on Main Street as well as frontage on Garden Street, and is south of 400 North. And the Tooele Sales and Service, the properties immediately to the north and south of the subject property are residential. One of them does have some commercial, a commercial business that's operating therein. As mentioned, the property is on general commercial, as are the properties to the north, to the west, and to the south, with some R17 located to the east on the adjacent side of Garden Street. This is an image of the property, looking into, looking into the east of the property from Main Street. You'll note that there is no direct access from Main Street into the property. The applicant did send me an email with some additional information regarding their application that was not included in the staff report, and I wanted to read that for the Planning Commission's information. They do not plan to access Main Street. They plan to access only Garden Street. They are proposing 15 to 20 cars on the site, only two employees. The employees will be the applicant and a family member. And they propose bringing in a steel building for storage purposes. Some of the concerns that staff has in regards to this application is making sure that it is suitable for a commercial business, where customers and employees frequent the site for commercial purposes. We are recommending approval of the conditional use permit, however, we have attached conditions in hopes to mitigate what we anticipate some of the impacts may be with this business. The conditions 1 through 5 are our standard housekeeping conditions, where we put those in there just to catch what we may have missed. Condition number 1 does require a site plan review application. If you go back to the aerial photograph, you will note that they have paved half the property. However, the eastern half is still unimproved. We are concerned that if they add more pavement to that property, it could, it could create stormwater runoff issues, especially when we have storms like we did on Saturday. So we wanna have a site plan application review conducted to make sure that they deal appropriately with stormwater management, to make sure that they deal appropriately with site lighting, that site lighting uses cabinetry and so forth to direct the light down into the site, ballard lighting, which is a low-scale type of lighting to reduce the, the light pollution to the adjacent properties. We also wanna make sure that the eastern side of the property is appropriately paved to sustain the weight of fire apparatuses, emergency vehicles, trucks that may be dropping the vehicles off for sale, and for customers and so forth. They have indicated that they are going to improve the eastern side of the property, but again, we need to have a site plan to review that. The site plan will also help us in reviewing basic needs for the customers, such as restroom facilities, which currently there are not any restroom facilities on the site. How do we deal with those? How do we deal with utilities? Those are the kinds of things that we look at during site plan review. And so condition number 1 is that they conduct a site plan application. Number 2 through 4 are housekeeping conditions. Number 6, I put this in there in case they did want to access Main Street, that they obtain UDOT approval. Main Street is a UDOT road. Tooele City has no authority over Main Street. So all access onto that street has to be approved by UDOT. If they do, in the future decide to change their mind and access Main Street, I would like to have this condition included in there so that they get, they get the necessary approvals. Condition number 7, site lighting shall utilize low-scale ballard lighting or cabinetry to direct light down into, down and into the site. Again, that's just out of respect for the adjacent residential uses. And then number 8, if the applicant intends to utilize access to Garden Street, the eastern portion of the lot should be improved to provide appropriate, solid pavement for employees and customer access, as well as emergency vehicles. This item does require a public hearing. Notices were sent to property owners within 200 feet. I did receive comments from Brent Carlton, Nicole Smith, and TJ Shields. The nature of their comments basically reflect what was just explained in our conditions of approval. Those comments did go to the Planning Commission's email. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer those for you. I do believe the applicant is here as well.
Thank you, Mr. Agard. Questions from council, further commission from the staff? Commissioner Hammer.
Andrew, regarding number 6 and number 8 that you have listed here, having no access from Main Street, if someone were to, I don't know, Google this address, and they go to this address that is, according to this, on Main Street, how would their car get there? Like, how will they know that they have to go to the back of this place? And will that cause any congestion on Main Street? Is that a safety issue? Like, I know people, like, slow down to look for addresses, and are they gonna slow down to look for the address and how to get into it? And will that, they be pulling into the residential house next door, or the other business that's on the other side?
Those are, that's an excellent question. I would anticipate that if this, that when this building, when this business goes into operation, that they will wanna have some signage, probably a monument sign on the frontage of the property, which they are permitted by ordinance to do. So I think that that would eliminate any confusion in regards to where it is. In regards to accessing that property from Main Street, again, UDOT needs to approve that. And if they were to approve, approach UDOT, I believe UDOT would require at most a shared access. SR-36 is an access-controlled highway, so they share that concern. They don't want too many accesses on there, so they're not gonna permit a new access, even if they did want to go into Main Street. But does that address some of your questions there?
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hammer. Mr. Anderson?
So you indicated that they were planning on putting a building on-site. Is that going to be something a little more than the trailer that's currently there on the property?
I'm not entirely sure what they propose to do with the new building. They did indicate that would be for storage. I don't know if it's storage for vehicles, vehicles receiving minor maintenance. I don't know for sure. That would be reviewed as part of the site plan application to make sure it meets all setbacks and proximity and location requirements.
Where this leads is to the parking, customer parking. And I know that that's based on the square footage of the building that isn't there.
Correct. In fact, automobile dealerships are not specified for parking in our ordinance. When that happens, the ordinance defers to the Community Development Director to approve the parking, which is me. And as part of their site plan application, I would require parking information, so that we can make sure that they provide appropriate, necessary parking to accommodate the employees, as well as potential customer base. And that building would be played into that parking calculation. We may apply a different type of parking standard to it, such as warehousing, which is a pretty low parking standard, but we would definitely consider that.
Any further questions for staff? Seeing none, thank you, Andrew.
Thank you, Commissioners.
We'll open the public hearing. This does require a public hearing. Same rules apply. If you'd like to speak on this issue, please come forward, give us your name, and be prepared to leave your contact information, and keep it to about three minutes.
Bob Johnson. I'm just a neighbor. Thank you to, he's answered about 25% of my questions already. Probably the biggest ones, questions I have is parking on Garden Street, and Garden Street traffic is, is getting, there's more and more traffic on Garden Street as the busier 400 North gets and from, and first East gets. So, and there's a business, just two lots up from there, that is not a repair shop, and they have large trucks coming and dropping cars off, and they have, their parking lot's pretty tight. So can we recommend maybe parking on one side of Garden Street to keep a through lane going? I don't know, I'm just asking that question. Garden Street parking.
Mr. Agard.
I can address that question for you, sir. All commercial businesses are required by ordinance to provide onsite parking. So they can't, under ordinance, utilize Garden Street for their business parking. So they will have to provide a parking lot or a parking area as part of their, as part of their site plan.
Okay. And then my second, and only, and I think you've, I think you've already addressed part of this, is for fire control. If we have a number of cars there, and we have one in the middle, electric car that the battery burns up on, can we access fire control from Main Street and Garden Street adequately?
That's a good question. I know we have a firefighter here on our commission that can... I know we have a firefighter here in our commission that can correct me if I'm wrong, but the fire department doesn't like to drive those trucks on anything that isn't paved. They are heavy, and they sink. And so getting access from Main Street for a fire truck could be difficult, because as you notice in the park strip, it's gravel. The fire department does review all site plans. So when they submit their site plan application, Nick Wall, our fire marshal, reviews those, and he will not approve them until he's comfortable that it meets fire department regulations and requirements. So we will address that when they do their site plan application, but that is an excellent point. They don't like to drive those trucks off, on soft surfaces.
Okay, that's the only two things I had, and I'd like to compliment that you've covered a lot of my questions already. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thanks.
Hello. My name is Karen, and I'm the one trying to open the body shop. So my dad bought the property, and I'm just trying to help him. We want to open a small body shop together. We don't plan on having any access to the main, from Main Street, because they already told us we would have to share the driveway with the neighbors, and that's not going to happen. We also just plan on having maybe 15 or 20 vehicles at this body shop. It's just going to be me and my dad working on it. We do have a small trailer there that does have a restroom, but we need to get like utilities and all of that. As far as parking, we will have a small parking in the back. We don't plan on being filled, like the whole thing. We want space there, so as far as a sign, we will have a sign in the front so people know that we're located in Gardens, well, from the back not. People don't come into the neighbors' houses. Other than that, I think that's, he covered everything for us. I don't think there's anything else. If you have any questions.
Can I ask a question, just based on your statement? You mentioned a couple of different times you were going to be doing a body shop there.
Sorry, not a body shop. It's because we used to own a body shop.
I understood. I want to make sure that we're clear. This is for something else.
We used to own a body shop. Sorry, no, no, no. No, he used to own a body shop, and now we want to do a auto sales. That's why, sorry. No.
Thanks for clarifying. I appreciate it.
Yeah, that's all. Thank you, guys.
Any further comments from the audience? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for further questions or further action. Chair, I'll make a motion. Commissioner Hamilton?
I move we approve the conditional use permit request by Karen Martinez, representing Guaranteed Auto and Sales, Inc., to approve the use of automobile sales and rental to occur at the subject property application number 2025081, based on the findings and subject to the conditions listed in the staff report dated October 1st, 2025.
So I'm clear on that, includes the additional ones that Andrew...
Absolutely, yes.
Mentioned. Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Hamilton, a second from Commissioner Hammer. Commissioner Hammer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Proctor?
Aye.
Commissioner Gossett?
Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Aye.
Commissioner Jensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Sloan also votes aye. Rule that passes 7-0. Item number six, a decision on preliminary subdivision plan request by Entellus Incorporated for the Sage Flats subdivision consisting of two lots, proposed to be located at approximately 3100 North, 250 East, in the G C General Commercial and MR20 multifamily residential zoning district on 37.3 acres. Mr. Agard.
Thank you, commissioners. You're probably familiar with this property. Your last meeting, you were able to approve a large apartment complex for this, for half of this property. This is the aerial photograph. The property is located north of 3100 North, which has been constructed, and there is a signal there at that intersection. 250 East is proposed to run north to south through the center of the property. There isn't much development around there, as you can see. It's just undeveloped ground, other than a single-family home to the north. The property currently bears two zoning districts. The eastern side is the general commercial, and the western side is the MR20. There's general commercial to the south, RR5 to the north, and then ERTA City located to the east. The subdivision itself is fairly straightforward. It's a preliminary subdivision plan because there'll be road dedication involved. The dedication of 250 East Street will happen with this subdivision plat, so we had to do the preliminary subdivision application. Both lots are larger than 15 acres and greatly exceed any lot size minimum requirements for both zoning districts. Pretty straightforward, and lots are this big. We are recommending approval with the basic conditions listed in your staff report. If you have any questions, happy to answer them for you.
Thank you, Ms. Agard. Anyone have any questions from the commission? Mr. Anderson?
I do. Actually, this is a question I probably should have asked last, last meeting. How much of this 37 acres is the general commercial?
Pretty much half. So I believe the commercial property, if you look at that map...
Says 19 acres.
19.7 acres, and the lot two is 16.7 acres. So it's more than half.
So it's more than half.
Yeah.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
Yes. I'm just not a fan of giving up general commercial.
Any further questions? Okay, this is not a public hearing. This is a straight-up decision, so in the absence of questions, I will look for some action. I'll give you a motion. Mr. Proctor?
Move we approve the preliminary subdivision plat request by Colby Kane, representing Entellus Incorporated for the Sage Flats subdivision application, 2025041, based on findings and subject to conditions listed in the staff report dated October 1st, 2025.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Commissioner Hamilton. Commissioner Hammer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Proctor?
Aye.
Commissioner Gossett?
Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Aye.
Commissioner Jensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Sloan also votes aye. Rule that passes 7-0. Item number seven, a decision on a request for a six-month site plan approval extension request by Sandrock Development for the 50th Place Development, proposed to be located at 350 North, 50 West, in the MR8 multifamily residential zoning district. Mr. Agard.
Thank you, commissioners. Almost a year ago to the day, you approved a site plan for a four, four-unit townhouse building just west of 50 West Street and south of 400 North. By ordinance, site plan approvals last one year if no action is taken. However, the ordinance does give the planning commission authority to extend that approval if they apply and ask for it. The applicant has been following up with me regularly to make sure their approval doesn't expire. They're, they're currently working through some water issues and so forth with the property, and still intend to build it. They would just like to extend that approval. Here's just a couple pictures of what it was, what it is, what it will be. The ordinance doesn't state how long you can extend an approval, so I suggest it's six months. If you felt something different, by all means, you could do that as well. But they just want an extension so they don't, they don't lose their approval.
Thank you, Ms. Agard. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, this also is simply requiring a decision, so we'll look for a motion. I'll make a motion. Commissioner Hamilton?
I move we extend the site plan design review approval for the 50th Place multifamily residential development for six months from the date of this meeting, October 8th, 2025, application 2024-041.
I'll second.
Commissioner Hamilton, we have a second from Commissioner Anderson. Commissioner Hammer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Proctor?
Aye.
Commissioner Gossett?
Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Aye.
Commissioner Jensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Sloan also votes aye. Rule that passes 7-0. Item number eight, my favorite part of the meeting, city council reports.
Love commissioners.
Commissioner Manzio, councilman, councilwoman, whatever.
Thank you. We didn't have a meeting to report on last, last week, because we were at the Utah League of Cities and Towns Conference. So I thought I'd just talk about a couple of things that we, of the classes I went to at the Utah League. It's always helpful to go to these. It's good to be with other city council members, and there are planning commissioners there as well from some municipalities, and just hear what they're doing and the issues they're having, and surprisingly, that they're the same things that are happening here. Infrastructure, transportation, housing are always the topics that come up at all of these meetings. But I went to a couple of interesting classes. One of them was a UDOT 101. I still have the same feelings about UDOT that I had before the class and after the class. So I don't know, that's all I'll say about that. There's a lot of, also a lot of talk about centers, and, which is basically just a gathering place in a communities that are necessary for events to happen and for neighbors to get together, especially in the world we're in right now, where a lot of the housing lots, as, you know, we talked about a lot tonight, with the lot size being decreased, and so places for people to gather. And, you know, it just as city council members, as we were going between classes, we just talked about, you know, where would that even be in Twillie? Where could that be? We have some great parks that we use for gathering spaces right now. Are those adequate? You know, something that we need to keep on our radar as cities to, to make sure that we're deliberate when we're approving things, and making sure that there are places for our residents to use and to gather and to do things together, because that's what makes a community, is those type of events. And then the other one, there are a lot of cities that I thought this was a good idea, that have some citizens academies, where they have classes and they bring cohorts of citizens in and just learn about the city, go to different departments within the city, you know, the water department, the reclamation center, just so they can learn what our city staff does.
That'd be awesome.
And what goes on. Yeah, I thought it was a really good idea, so something...
Educational, at least, for most of us.
Yeah.
We'll start in Andrew's office.
Yeah.
Probably next week is okay for you, right?
Yeah.
Of course. He won't be here.
Those are a couple of things that, those are a couple of classes I went to. I mean, they're, it's a couple of days' worth, but some good things.
Any questions to the council?
I have a question.
Okay.
You mentioned that planning commissioners were at some of those meetings, and we don't go to meetings like that. Should we do different training, more training? Like what?
Maybe. I'm, I mean, I don't know that it was bad for planning commissioners, you know? I, I was surprised, because I sat at it, next to a planning commissioner, and said they were here from the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm like, huh, interesting. So I don't know, something to think about.
Just so you're aware, and Andrew can get up and speak on his own behalf, he does have a budget for training. I've taken ridiculous advantage of it.
I need to take more ridiculous advantage of that.
Those options are out there, and, and I have not been to this one, but I've been to the Land Use Institute a couple of times, been to the American Planning Conference a couple of times. Brilliant stuff for us. So if you're interested in stuff like that, let Andrew know, and if he can fit it in, he's really, really good at getting that stuff taken care of.
And there is a good training coming up from the Utah Land Institute. I couldn't tell you what it is, but I, right now, off the top of my head, but I did, I mean, I got an email, and it was a good one.
I'm signed up for it. It's going to be really cool.
Yeah.
You're signed up for it?
Yeah, it's a good one.
It's a, it's a two-day, two-day gathering, ironically, at the Realtor Building in Sandy. So I know where the secret refrigerator for all that Diet Coke is.
Look at Chris.
But they, they deal with, they deal with planning issues, they deal with land use, they deal with growth, they deal with, I would say, you won't know what that is, Land Use Development Act. They deal with all the stuff that we deal with. And, and again, you get to sit at a table with somebody that you might not be familiar with, but it's going through some of the same, last time I went, I sat with a planning commissioner from Ogden. This meeting's gone an hour and 40 minutes so far. If they're doing theirs tonight, they'll be out about midnight.
Yeah.
So we're doing the same stuff. They're just doing it a whole different scale than we are, so.
Okay. Yeah, there are some really good ones. I've been to the Utah Land Institute ones, just virtually, and they're, they've always been good.
Well worth your time.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, councilman. Item number nine, business item, election, getting rid of the current planning commission chair, and trying to come up with a competent one for the remainder of 2025. Obviously, Chairman Robinson felt like taking care of several thousand people with troubles was better than this gig, and I don't blame him for that, but it does leave us with several months' worth of a chair vacancy. So it comes to us to fill that vacancy.
The only thing I need to add is there's one person that's still not qualified, or does not qualify.
There's many that are qualified.
I should not say he's not qualified. He's very qualified. But he does not qualify to be the chair, because he hasn't been a year without being the chair, and that's Commissioner Hamilton.
Darn.
But he can be the vice chair.